And moving forward, I'll take every opportunity I can for grant funding that can help decrease the cost of this project. It's roughly 42,000 square feet of impacted space. Half of that is new construction, which will be the new two-story addition up the front of the hospital. And then the other half is renovating an existing space. So when you come across, when you come to the hospital, and we're still working on these designs, of course, in the details, but basically think of a new curb appeal, new addition off the front. Our ED will expand to accommodate more exam rooms, expanding out into our ambulance bay. And that's all in detailed design work that we're working with our owner's rep, Steve Horton, who's here tonight, that helped us go through all these projects. He's done multiple hospital and healthcare projects. So there's much work to do moving forward, and we really want to get to the point where we're shovel-ready. And as Frank shared, it's a matter of we move on this project when we're ready to and the environment's right, meaning we can get the supply, the labor, material, and the markets in good space. So we have a period of roughly four years once, because of certainly a need to break grant on this. To illustrate the need for this addition, I'll just point out one last thing. Dartmouth is building a new patient tower, finishing up a new patient tower. And they're doing that because their infrastructure that they're moving away from is 30 years old. We're moving from infrastructure that's 50 years old. So we've been really good with our resources and extending the life of that. But as Frank did share, the environment at which we provide care continues to change, and we need to adapt with that. So, thank you.
Well, just give you a general timeline. Understanding is how both Brian and Frank have pointed out that things are always in motion. So it's not written in stone. But in general, as Brian pointed out, we're going after as many grant opportunities as we can to help manage the costs of this project. So the grant application process that starts tonight with our public hearing, this grant application will go in by September 13th, and that starts our process. There are a number of grants that we're looking at that we'll be going after in the next year, year and a half, as well as new market tax credits that we'll be looking at. Construction is proposed around sometime in 2023, but again, that could shift, and potentially completed in 2025. But again, that could shift, just with everything that's happening. We didn't expect a pandemic in the middle of everything we had in the last few years. So with that information said, we'd like to open this up for questions first from the council, and then from our general public here.
When you said the state of Gouda, are you referencing the Green Mountain Care Board? Are they the ones that...? Okay, so when you said the state, it's actually...
Yes.
...back in my mind, have they...? Because I know how they can be tough, and I didn't know if they'd approved the project yet, so, okay.
They're the gold standard.
Thank you for understanding that significantly.
Yes. They're the gold standard, and we will be quoting that in every grant application because that shows the need. They've approved it, that shows the need.
I had made a note even before tonight to Steve about that.
Excellent.
And then the 1 million CDBG that we're starting tonight, that actually comes to the city and we oversee it, or...?
Yep. So written in statute for community development block grants, the applicants must be the municipalities. So the applicant will be the city. The money comes in for use for this project. The match does not come from the city for that. That will come out of the overall structure of the financing that we have for this project.
That was my other thing.
Not to worry.
That's all I had. Those are the two things. Question?
The only question I had, and if you could just answer it, was are we on the hook for any...
For any match?
And...
No. The match will come forth with the other financing that will come in for this project.
What are the odds that it'll be approved?
It will be a competitive project. It'll be a competitive project for sure, especially up in this area.
Does that go through the health board in Vermont?
No, the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, will go through the Vermont Community Planning Program, Development Planning Program. So that will go before their board in, I believe it's November, submit September, November. We should hear sometime early winter.
Is the life of the grant, the desk coincide with the life of the CON?
Close. The life of this grant will be three years. So there will be overlap. As with all grants, for good reason, there's a potential for extension. But there's possibility, the way we would look at this, is using the grant for pieces of this project that would finish within that three-year period. Can I bring my about these grants? Is it a reimbursement, or is it they give you the money?
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement. Do they spend it on...?
Mine were answered.
I'm just out of another question. My mind is always... The Northern Waters, when are you applying? I'm just curious. The hospital can apply directly. We don't have to apply, correct?
No, that's correct.
That's different. You can apply, okay.
Yeah. And that would be later in the early spring. That's usually around March.
The reason I was asking, do we still have an opening night with the...? Because of COVID, everything got delayed. So I was wondering about that.
No, that's good. Yeah. Most of the other grants will be applications directly by the hospital. But the way that the CDBGs are written, it's a municipality, municipality must apply for it.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
So three years of planning is good, you know. But just for reassurance of this, for me, sitting for years I was on the board, that it isn't a fly-by-night, oh, wouldn't it be nice? Let's get fancy like everybody else. We had started looking at renovating and doing things more than three years ago, but didn't move on things. We were still looking, planning, and doing things. And then it really came to fruition. And actually, COVID actually, I do believe, brought out some things that actually needed to be looked at and changed. They've certainly brought about the need for private rooms. Not only is it nice, for health reasons, it really brought out the fact that private rooms are really pretty necessary. Besides all the other stuff, too.
Can we open it up?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry for my tag, because I didn't realize the public hearing is that sick. But so you're applying a community block grant from...? ABD from whom?
From... It's the VCDP, the Vermont Community Development Program. It's a state program.
Mr. Mayor, for how much?
$1 million. For $1 million.
$1 million. Here. Can you put an addition at the hospital? Mr. Mayor, what's the addition to do for it?
Do you want... Would somebody like to address the addition?
The addition is a two-story addition off the front of the hospital to include inpatient care, relocation of our lab, expansion of the ED, exam rooms, and relocation of our rehab services.
And, Mr. Mayor, what's going to happen with the existing space? What, Mr. Mayor, what's going to happen? Mayor?
Yeah, just I had to ask you.
What's the... What's going to happen with the existing space? Are you going to do...
Rehab.
Take the ED, I'm sorry?
No. Rehab gets moved to where the bed search currently is, so we use that space.
The next room?
Yep. The rest of it's new addition. Lab gets relocated into the new addition. The lab space will be turned into conference space for public use.
And?
And the ED expands into the existing ambulance bay.
Are you going to lose any parking spaces or anything? Are you... Do you need additional parking?
Well, we're still working on that design, but because the addition's coming off the front, it's very conceivable that we will lose some parking.
How many?
I don't know yet. But we also have parking in the east lot, so it's all connected there off the front.
Are you going to...? Are you going to Act 250 for this? Are you... Where are you in the permanent process?
We're... Just as we've applied with the CON for that, we're also in the middle of Act 250 as well.
And so the community block grant, that's federal monies?
It is. It is federal money. And I put, just so that you know, we have the... On page four of the five pages, I put a brief description of each of the areas. That will be cars, renovation, and construction of the hospital, just because that'll help for sure. But, yeah.
And you're here, right?
I'm Karen.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Just curious, about how much money are you predicting the project as a whole will cost? This grant is only for a million. I'm sure you're talking about more than a million.
Yeah, it's in the neighborhood of 25 to 28 million, in today's dollars.
Yeah, right. And the second thing is, this is a block grant that the city is applying for from a certain agency. Does this in any way harm us if we're seeking to apply for some other reason for monies from that same agency that you're talking about? In other words, are we in competition for monies that we might want for some other reason?
So right now, this is the only community development block grant before the city for the September 13th round of funding. So there are no other projects that you would be competing against. It is a competitive process against projects elsewhere in the state. But the municipality right now is applying, has in front of it this project for the September 13th round. There will be future rounds.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is state... State grant, or...?
It's a state grant.
Other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as your representative, I'm sitting on the healthcare committee. And I know that the president, Brian Noel, and Frank Noel have presented this plan, as I recall, to a high member of our healthcare committee. He's also presented it to the Green Mountain Care Board. And I missed a little bit, probably early on in the cover. But from everything that I've heard by sitting on the healthcare committee, that everybody seems to be favorable for this proposal.
Great, thank you. Other comments, questions?
Yeah. I do have one. When we read this, it was in the Caladonia. And then the other one's in the Caladonia. When I apply my Newport paper every day, there's more of those sold than for this area, Caladonia. I just wondered, how come it wasn't in ours?
So the reason that was put in the Caladonian paper is because the hospital serves the greater area of not only Orleans County, not just Newport, but Orleans County and northern Essex County as well. And so that paper extends more broadly.
Good answer. Thank you.
Anything else? So this is the 50th year of the hospital, correct?
It is.
I can remember, I lived in that neighborhood for so long, being 12 years old when it opened. So be my age now.
The new hospital.
The new, yeah, the new. Right, that's what I'm getting at. 50 years, for sure.
We built things at last.
Right.
Because our old hospitals still stand.
And as Brian mentioned, for our community and the communities around us, we're very fortunate to have a hospital in our area, in our direct area. And we're fortunate to have a hospital that's willing to do the work and the planning over time to keep investing and upgrading the services that are needed by our communities. So...
I know when people watch the move, they look at the healthcare, the education system. Those are like the top priorities, top things they look at when they look to move to a community. So anything else for anyone?
I'd just add one more comment. As you know, you learn about healthcare and what it takes to operate hospitals. Our hospital, short-term, is struggling financially. But that doesn't impact this long-term project because we have a strong balance portfolio. And so as you hear what's going on in the state of affairs for hospitals across the state, we're in that with everybody else. We are impacted by the inflation and everything else. But that doesn't... We don't... We can't lose track of what this long-term need is. This is a short-term condition. And so you'll be hearing, you know, probably, you know, about us working through those things. But as far as this project, it's solid. It's a need. And the hospital's been here for 100 years, and we're going to continue to make sure that that's the case. So just wanted to comment.
Great. Anything else? Then I guess if not, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
This 15, 2022, 6:30 PM. All members of the council are present. All those include Moore Dogan, City Manager, and James Johnson, our City Clerk, Treasurer. The next item is to approve the minutes of August 1st, 2022. I believe there is one correction.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 1 August 2022. With one name change and new business. We had a case where they had Mr. Charbonneau move to approve events for Eden Ice, and he also seconded it, but that wasn't the case. It was Mr. Vaschon that seconded it. So with the one correction, I make a motion to accept.
So a motion made to accept the minutes with the one correction. Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Vaschon. Discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. I have it. Motion carries. All right. The next item is comments by members of the public. I don't believe anyone had signed up. And so, Mr. Wilson, you said you had something?
I'm a member of the public also, and I live in Newport. There's a minor error tonight. And when I saw it, and I said, when we got our paperwork, this said 6:30 for the council meeting. But this paperwork that we got says 6 o'clock for the public hearing. So I came in this morning and got with the city manager and he says, something's not jiving here. But I said, if this is going at 6, at least let the council members know so they could be here for that portion of the public hearing. So we're going to vote on a million-dollar bond here, whatever. It might be a good idea to have them here. So she did send that out, but I guess we forgot about sending it out to the press. But there was a mistake. Partially corrected this morning. So that's it, and I'm not yet.
It didn't reach us either, but I know it's 6:30.
No, it didn't reach this desk until it was about 9:30, I guess.
Well, that's why I came to last running in about 6.
There was a mistake made, and we tried to correct what we could in a hurry.
Does anyone care to hear what might have been missed during the beginning of the public?
Yeah.
Karen, if you want to just kind of repeat?
So this community development block grant is an application for the renovation and construction project at North Country Hospital. The application will be for $1 million. And I'll just go briefly through each section. The community development block grant is applied for by the municipality. That's written in state statute. They must be the applicant. There's a process by which of information and project development that happens before it gets to this point. But once it's ready then to go public with information, that's what we're doing tonight, to get public feedback on the project and on any potential impacts of the project that the public would like to weigh in on. So this particular project will take place over at North Country Hospital. The proposed project is necessary to enhance, really, the 50-year-old care environments of the hospital. And it will be a combination of renovations of existing space and in addition to construction of a two-story section to the hospital for additional space. The Board of Trustees at North Country Hospital have been very proactive in their facility master planning over a number of years. As Melissa mentioned, it's not just a couple of years. They've been doing this over a number of years. And this particular project has been identified as a high-need project, the highest of need. COVID certainly showed a number of things that many of us didn't know before, and sort of informed the project and some of the design elements of the project. A description, so the primary focus of the new addition and renovations is to consolidate and improve the present multi-floor inpatient department, provide a larger lab department area, and expand the emergency department. These are all areas that have existing constraints. There will be approximately in new additions about 20,198 square feet. And the renovations of the interior will be about 22,000 square feet, give or take according to. For the inpatient department, the goal is to improve the patient staffing model, infection control, and patient experience by consolidating the inpatient beds to a single floor and put most of the patient beds into private rooms. Brian described that quite in detail. For the lab department, as Brian explained, instead of having to go through the hospital and into a lower area, North Country Hospital would like to improve the present condition of the lab department by creating a new addition of 4,097 square feet. It'll improve the workflow, efficiencies, the functionality, and patient and staff access to the lab. So that'll essentially be a redesign. The emergency department, the hospital would like to improve the department by renovating the current ambulance garage into additional emergency department exam rooms, which will approximately add 1,500 square feet to the emergency department. That'll allow for additional capacity. Again, it will improve workflow efficiency. It'll improve patient safety, and it'll improve the patient experience. The OT, PT, and ST departments, as you know, if you've been over there, are off-campus at the moment. Those will be... Those are currently housed separately, but they will be brought into the existing facility. And this will improve access and service to various hospital departments, such as inpatient, PT, and OT. It'll provide for a consolidated and updated department of about 8,600 feet, square feet. And then access, canopies, and other, so the exterior and the access to the hospital. A new front entry lobby and reception area will improve patient and visitor arrival. Front entry lobby and reception area will be a centralized check-in and provide greater security and controls. There will be new entry canopies for the front entrance and the emergency department for visitors and patients. And a new 656-square-foot emergency department corridor addition will be added to allow for flow to direct access from the main lobby to the emergency department area. The plans also include new air handling units for the surgical area and new roof replacement for the proposed renovated lab area. So the projected costs as of this moment are about $25,369,670. Those will likely change. But the community... But the hospital is looking at a number of financing structures, including a number of grants that they're going for in addition to new market tax credits. The balance that is remaining after grants have been exhausted will be loans and equity that the hospital will put into the structure. The timeline will start essentially with the application of this grant on September 13th. We'll get that in. Proposed construction to start around July 2023, again, subject to change. And the construction is proposed to be completed in September of 2025. That is, in essence, the overview of what we found. Is there anything I missed that you recall? No?
I have a question. Any inpatient, increased inpatient capacity?
The number of beds, as I understand it, will remain the same. The capacity will remain the same, but there will be efficiencies due to the way it's laid out that will improve both services and staffing, as well as infection control for inpatient services.
So no additional inpatient state capacity?
Correct.
Karen, I can address that. It's a critical...
You understand my question?
Oh, but... It's a critical care hospital designation. They're limited to 25 inpatient beds.
Yes, I understand. So no additional state?
No addition.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, limited to 25 beds by whom? By PEP or the state or federal?
It's the state. It's a critical... It's...
It's a light definition.
It's critical care, and it's what?
Well, in critical, it's... Actually, it's federal.
Federal, it's federal.
And because we're a rural hospital, it's... We're limited to the number of beds we can serve, but it also affects the finance structure, charges and things, which is beyond my scope at this point to talk about these structures. Because I'm not on the board anymore. But it's limited to 25 beds.
And you've got to remember, like was said earlier, the goal of hospitals unlike 20 years ago, or 30, 40 years ago, is to get you in and out. You're better off recovering at home when you can than, you know, being in the hospital. And so that is the goal of every hospital in the country now, is basically that you go in, whatever, and then they get you out as quick as they can.
I have Karen's question. Is there any thought of how the outbuildings right now might be repurposed?
Yes. That's not in the particular... In this particular presentation, but I can certainly get you that information. But the question was, the additional buildings at the hospital, for example, that would be incorporated, services incorporated in the hospital, those buildings will be used for other purposes, offices and so forth.
Yeah. Maybe not housing?
I have not seen housing. We would have to ask Brian.
Can I ask Karen a question?
Yes.
As this hospital currently is losing specialists that are leaving in broke, either voluntarily or because financial reasons, is this plan going to include increasing specialties? Because it's a long way to go to Dartmouth for an exam.
It is. And as with many rural hospitals, as a critical care hospital, it's meant to address an immediate need and then move to tertiary structures such as Dartmouth and Arlington.
So we're spending $25 million not to increase services?
Well, actually, it's not necessarily to increase services. It's to improve efficiencies. And as most hospitals are confronting the change in labor force, one of the goals that you would see in the Green Mountain Care Board review of the project is to look at how we create efficiencies that don't require the hiring of additional full-time people. That is actually a goal for maintaining our healthcare structure, maintaining our services. So there are things that can be done design-wise that actually improve efficiencies.
Would transportation then be included in this so people can actually get to the other hospitals?
So that may be beyond the scope of the hospital. Right now, we're looking at the structure of the building and the design of the building to improve efficiencies and patient safety and infection control and so forth. But certainly, all of those things contribute. But whether they're part of the scope of this, that is not currently part of the scope of this particular project.
Karen, just curiosity of my own, if they're taking over the ambulance days and turning them into rooms, where are the ambulance going to go? Are they going on boat outside?
No. They have a design piece for that. And I do wish Steve were here, but no, they have that taken into consideration. Again, it's really to improve the flow and the design elements because of the needs that were different 50 years ago. You can always get more information. No, it's a good question.
For two years since COVID, they haven't used those ambulance days at all.
I don't know. People...
They're using them for isolation rooms. They're using them for isolation rooms.
Especially they have canopy, so when you're getting unloaded in a wheelchair, hit in that pouring rain for 10 minutes trying to get it to the hospital. I know that. You'd nice to have a canopy, which is-
It's a nice design, yeah.
Yeah, no, because I know that's a need, personal experience.
And again, it continues to be a work in progress, so what we've outlined here tonight is the general direction, and things will adjust as circumstances dictate. But it's a wonderful investment in our community for sure, and certainly needed over a long period of time.
It's 15 years old and you-
50 years.
Eventually, you have to upgrade a facility.
Mr. Mayor, did I hear there are designs out there?
They're currently working with an architect on designs.
So there's no even sample or draft?
I don't have any.
We don't have any. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. The next item is-
I'm sorry, there needs to be a vote on that resolution to proceed.
I thought that was number four.
We're doing number four now.
We're doing number four now. We just did comments, and so I was going to go and said we need the CVG. So following the agenda, following the agenda. I have one we signed, but the next is the, to consider the application by the hospital for the CVG application. I'm not going to read this whole resolution, but basically, it's an official resolution that the city council will vote on and will pass to apply for the funds.
And I did fill one out for you, we're needed to be-
It's here.
You have a copy of it?
Yes.
They both approved the city to apply and to designate your authorized signer.
Right. No, it's here. Sorry for this. I know Mr. Wilson gave it to me. I haven't done anything with my papers. Try it, let's stop. I knew I had it. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the city applying for the CVG funds.
So what?
Motion made by Mr. Bashan, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Patterson. Discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to add one, there's no real discussion. As I asked earlier, where, there's no city match for any portion of it, this is strictly, we just have to be the middle people on it.
That's correct. The match, there is a match required for this grant, but that will come through the other financing for this project. That match will be met. So the city's not obligated to the match.
So we have a motion and a second, and the other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I have seen because of the design board. I'm sorry. Okay.
If Cameron, it's okay if he just doesn't sign it, since he abstains. Cameron, it's okay if he just doesn't sign it, since he abstains. He abstains, so it's okay. Okay, we'll move on. The next item, number five, is the Gardner Park Environmental Status Presentation.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to introduce Christine Beeling, who is here from the Environmental Protection Agency, and I'm going to pull in, you're welcome to sit. I'm going to pull up the PowerPoint and try to share it remotely, so bear with me, please.
So while Laura does that, I'm Chris Beeling, I work for the Environmental Protection Agency in something called our Brownfields Program. And our Brownfields Program is a program to work with communities like yourself all over the country, though I work only in the six New England states, to redevelop contaminated properties or properties that might need a little bit of a boost before they can be redeveloped. Because they have contamination, hazardous substances, pollutants, or contaminants. It's so nice to meet Mike Welch tonight, who I've never met, this person in this crazy Zoom world. Dave Snidderger and Laura have been working with us on this project. So we are going to talk specifically about Gardner Park and the trajectory that we got here tonight. I also wanted you to know Josh Stewart is on the line. Josh is our engineering consulting firm, and he is here for any of the real nitty-gritty technical questions, if you have them. But I just wanted to kind of give an overview of where we are, because it has been a very lengthy process. And when you see the dates, it'll be pretty obvious why we had some delays. So Laura, do you want to put the first slide up for the map?
Assuming that this is being shared remotely.
Okay.
So for the folks who are online, let us know if you don't see these slides.
There are no slides right now.
Did you say there's no slides?
No slides? We can either, yeah, we can give it a second or we can tell you where we are. We're on the slide with the second slide, Josh.
I just want to-
So before I start, I want you to know that I actually got to go to Gardner Park today. The weather was certainly cooperative, so thank you for hosting me on such a beautiful day. I have been to Newport many times before, but always nice to-
Not such good weather?
Yes. I didn't want to go there. But today certainly was a splendid day.
I think we might be better right now.
Josh?
Yeah, it's set up.
All right, great. So Josh, you can hear Josh coming from above. Josh, chime in anytime you need to.
That's good.
This is just a schematic that we use in our reports, just to kind of set the stage for what we're talking about. We were originally called in to do some work on the playground area and the playground redevelopment, but the park was, the state of Vermont asked us to look at the entire park, so hence the boundary that you see here. So please, I don't know the proper, if anyone wants to interrupt or query, you tell me how you want to do that.
If someone who's presenting has a question, just raise your hand, I think that'd be the best thing that I could do.
Thank you. All right. So you want to do studies to date? So if you look at the studies to date, some of these predate me, and Laura might be able to add in, but the studies go back to 2015, where we're talking about a phase two. Phase two means you have, you're doing a site assessment of the earth and the soils in the park. So that had started way back in 2015. You have a very comprehensive, comprehensive master plan that has some beautiful ideas on how to redevelop the park to create your recreation economy, which is what we are trying to support with the Brownfields redevelopment, and you certainly have some beautiful resources in which to do that. I got involved with the third bullet, you can see the Northeastern Development Association, the NVDA Coalition Grant, that's Dave Snidderger and Irene Nagel. We have a competitive grant process at EPA, nationally competitive, that regional planning commissions, municipalities, and others can apply for. NVDA applied for what we call a coalition grant, which is a combination of many communities, mostly because you're a pretty rural part of the world. Newport is one of the communities that is a part of Dave's coalition grant, and that was back in, Dave won that grant, or NVDA won that grant in 2019. So at that point in time, they had $600,000 of funding, of which to do environmental assessments across the Northeast. At that point in time, I believe Mike came in and talked about a grant that we had on the books, or the city had on the books, to do the playground redevelopment, that great picture you saw at the beginning. The splash park, an ADA compliant playground. Anything else I'm forgetting?
Improvements to the escape shack, the accessibility sidewalk improvement, so a comprehensive project.
Yeah. And in order to do that, in order to get your funding, you have to do an environmental assessment. It's part of the process. So nothing special, just, you know, a step along the way, of which we know when you're applying for grants, many steps along the way. We did a phase one, which is, like I said, kind of a paper exercise, who are the neighbors? Do you have, you know, a nuclear power plant next door? Do you have a wastewater treatment plant next door? You know, so that type of thing, who are the neighbors and what are the impacts to the park? Based on that, we did a phase two assessment where, like I said, you put holes in the ground, you test soil, you test groundwater, and you see what you see. One thing you learn about these, when you talk about brownfields redevelopment, you never just do one assessment, you always need to do a little bit more, right? There's what we call data gaps, and there's always data gaps. No matter the best-laid plans of mice and men, always data gaps. So hence, data gap has come in, and that's where Josh comes on. So at that point in time, the grant funding ran out, there was no additional grant funding, but yet you still had your playground redevelopment work that needed to be completed. So EPA has a program called Targeted Brownfields Assessment, where it's not competitive, EPA, well, it's competitive in a different way. EPA has our own contractors, Josh on the line, who continued the assessments for you under a different mechanism, but basically just continues to the next step. A different funding mechanism is really the bottom line. This is where I talked about a little bit of delays in the game, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you were concerned about some of those. COVID happened, getting in and out of the state with the crew from New Hampshire happened, lab work being put on hold happened, so we had a lot of delays for a bit of time on this project, as well as many others, just based on the world that fell apart in 2020. So we did a supplemental phase assessment in March 2021, we did another data gap assessment in January 2022, specifically looking at superficial soils on the ball field. So like I said, the state asked us to expand the reach to the ball fields, and we did that. We talked about what you can do to remediate what we found and the corrective action plan. So let's scope ahead. I kind of combined the results of all the assessments into one package, so you didn't have to go assessment by assessment. So here's what we were talking about before. Your park is built on historic fill, there's a lot of debris, anything from car parts, bricks, concrete, ash, you know, and this is nothing against the town, this is just what happened 100 years ago, kind of, you know, just kind of a standard procedure. So we have historic fill. We have subsurface soils, subsurface meaning below the top six inches, with contamination, groundwater contamination above regulatory standards, that means you have to do something. And then we had potential impacts from the wastewater treatment plant, the Newport car wash, and the mini-mart. And it says four wrecks, I just wanted to say that I only have three bullets, but we broke out the wastewater treatment plant because that was a publicly owned building, as well as the mini-mart and the car wash, because that was a different, a different own building. Next slide, Laura. Let me just flip to my notes to make sure I don't forget anything. All right, so here we go. So this is hard to see, we have all these documents online, we can share with you, Laura has them, I have them, we can share anything that you need to see, they're all public information. But this is just one of the schematics that talks about a couple of things I wanted you to look at. You can see where it says, maybe you can't see, but if you looked closely, you could see monitoring wells, which is exactly that, monitors the groundwater, the groundwater below the park's about five feet deep, so not very deep, and the reason for that is because you have a lake and you have a river right around your park. So groundwater is pretty high. Soil borries are exactly that, you go down into the soil, anywhere from zero to six to 18 inches, take samples and you see what you see. And that has all been done. So here's the playground area, you can see, has really been looked at quite extensively, and the ballparks. You can also see the groundwater flows a little funky there because you have so much water. You have the lake on one side, the river, so it's not maybe as clear of a model as it might be.
It was basically filled in 1929, and they began filling it.
So it's a little bit complicated because of the fill, but it just gives you an idea of what area has been assessed. Okay, next slide, please, Laura. So what we did is we broke them down into what we call decision units, okay? So we did some deeper soil samplings, the state came back and said, uh-oh, but the issue at a playground, right, is the top soils, right? The soils that you're playing in, right, that you're touching. So that's what we wanted to see. So we broke them into what we call decision units, one, two, three, four. One being decision unit, one is the playground area as it stands, these are all ball fields, broken out kind of just on the boundaries of the ball fields. And what we do in those parts is we do what they call composite samplings, it's a little bit of an efficiency method. You have 30 boxes, but you don't do 30 samples, you take little bits and you combine them and you kind of, you know, do a machination with certain very formulaic procedures, and you kind of figure out what's there. So what has become of that? We had some exceedances for arsenic lead and some of what we call polyaromatic hydrocarbons, stuff from coal gasoline. And then we had, we'll get that out a little bit more. I just want to point out, we had a little bit of a quality control issue with this one, so next slide, Laura. We went back and we did it again, just to make sure that we did it properly, to make sure that that was a ball field too, to make sure that, you know, everything was up to standards and procedures, and again, it was a quality control issue that we wanted to double-check. All right, so now, this is it, drum roll, next slide. This is what we found. So this is just a summary slide, and like I said, I have many, many, many data tables and others that we can share, and Josh has them at his fingertips, I think, back in the, behind the curtain. But what we found is, there's groundwater contamination, nothing new, you've known that for seven, eight years. It's containing arsenic and lead, very common contaminants in the state of Vermont, polyaromatic hydrocarbons, and naphthalene, mostly again from coal, gasoline, you know, petroleum hydrocarbon type contaminations. Has everyone heard of PFAS, kind of the contaminant of the day? You do have very low levels of PFAS contamination there, above action limits for the state of Vermont, so groundwater has some impacts. But again, if you're talking about your park, what we're worried about are the soils, right? We're worried about where you're going to dig to renovate for the playground area and where kids are playing on the ball fields. Good news, we'll start with good news. Decision unit two, three, and four are below what we call project action limits based on Vermont standards, so no corrective action, nothing needs to be done for current use. Don't go digging in the ball fields, okay? If you dig in the ball fields, you're going to have to deal with the soils, but if you just play ball in the ball fields and just leave them as is, you're good to go, and you've been cleared by the state of Vermont to just move forward. Also want to say Linda Preventure, who was our state of Vermont rep that's on vacation today, so that's why she couldn't join us, so just want to, you know, point that out, that it wasn't because she didn't want to, she's just on vacation and it is vacation time. Okay, so this- Okay, so this is the one we want to talk about. Playground area DU1 has arsenic exceeding the paths in the superficial soils. So basically, what that means is you have to have what we call a contaminant management plan, a soil management plan. You just can't dig and renovate at will. You have to do something with those contaminated soils. And then we also had arsenic PHs and lead in the subsurface soils, like I said, below, beneath most of the, most of the entire park area, which again is why you don't want to be digging in ball fields, right, when you play ball on the ball fields. All right, so that leads us to the next phase. Something has to be done before we can get to Mike's grant to renovate the park and make the splash park and, you know, work with the Recreation Committee to do what they want to do. And this is a tough one, but this is just, this just is, like I said, it's a process. This is what it is. The next part of the process is what we call a evaluation of correction actions and alternatives, ECA. There's always a word in government speak. But basically, you pick, you look at alternatives. You know, do you dig up the whole park and start again and bring in clean soils? Probably not, too expensive. Do you do nothing? Probably not, because there's a health risk. What's the one in between that makes some sense? So if you're going to renovate and redevelop your playground, you're going to remove some of the soils, have to do something with them. You're going to put an isolation barrier on, kind of like a liner type thing. You build your playground above that with clean soil, and you implement what we call institutional controls, which means you probably will take some monitoring well samples for time, and again, you're not going to be punching holes in that once it's done. That's just kind of a very big picture brush of what has been approved by the state in May 2020. The state has approved that. So the next stage, next step in the phase, in the process, Laura? Miss the cap. Oh, well, so this one you want to look at really closely. So the corrective action plan. The corrective action plan says, okay, you have three alternatives. This is how we think we're going to implement that preferred alternative. That is now under review for Laura, for Linda Preventure, and from us. But the one thing I wanted to pull out in there, which Laura has been very familiar with, is the costs. It's not cheap to do this, and it's probably around the $270,000 plus or minus we've got to contingency in there in order to do that. Again, that is pre-doing any redevelopment of the playground. This is to get the site ready for redevelopment, just from an environmental perspective. Okay, so $300,000. Laura, next slide. This is what I was talking about. The corrective action plan was just submitted for review to the state. It's still under review. It does assume that the playground will be redeveloped. What we do at this point in time is Linda Preventure approves that. Approve is really the wrong word. She gives it the go, and then we do a public comment period. So at that point in time, if the community would like, we can do a very detailed public meeting on, you know, much more detailed than this. The community does not have to have that, but the community has the option to publicly comment on that for 30 days. The rub here is, you have contamination. So even if you don't redevelop the playground area, you have to do something about it. So it's not like you can just take a pass. Okay, next stage, next step. So this is a step of slides that I'm just going to talk about a little bit, and I'm going to be honest with you, this is a little bit outside of my reach. This is the state program, and I'm just stepping in here for Linda. So I'm just going to do my best, and we can go back again, and when Linda's on vacation, we can revisit this. But there is a program called BRELLA, which is Brownfield's Reuse Environmental Liability Limitation Protection Program. And basically, this is saying, okay, you own a contaminated property, and the city, in this case, is a responsible party. Correct, that's the terminology, because you own the property since many, many months ago. But you are allowed to sell that said property in theory, and this is not just specific to the park. This is just in general, any property. You can sell that property, and the person who purchases that is kind of out of the chain of liability, right? Because if you want to flip that to somebody else, say you have a mill, and you want to sell the mill, you can sell the mill, and the person who purchases it is not responsible for the cleanup. And it gets you out of it. There's a whole program, it's BRELLA. So it's a little bit of, a little bit of a way to get some properties cleaned up, and we'll see why next. So the next phase is, if you want to apply, next slide, Laura. If we want to apply for state or brownfields cleanup funding, again, a competitive process, you need to be in the BRELLA program, and you cannot be a responsible party. So that limits the city's options as a responsible party. There are a couple of workarounds, and we can talk about that a little bit, and these are just throwing things up in the air to try to get some funding, or the city can come up with $300,000. You know, it's just trying to come up with some ideas. Like I said, so there's state funding from Vermont ACCD, very similar to what I think you were chatting with Karen, and then we have competitive cleanup grants. For example, the St. John's Bay Armory right now has a cleanup grant from EPA. So there are several options in that. Okay, so how do we get to the cleanup of DU1? So like I said, the city of Newport is not eligible to roll in the BRELLA program because you are a responsible party. The city is not eligible to apply for state or brownfields cleanup funds because you are a responsible party. And I got to be honest with you, I think the BRELLA statute was written for, not necessarily municipalities, right? You're not the bad guys. It was written for the more corporate leaders, but there's no exemption or anything for municipalities under BRELLA. It's a responsible party, it's a responsible party, no matter if you're mom and pop, no matter if you're Dupont, or no matter if you're Newport. There are some workarounds to get cleanup funds, where a third party can come in and take ownership of the playground area, in theory, apply for cleanup funds, and then either do something with it. And that would be something, they would continue to own the playground for the one parcel, they could transfer it to another entity, or you could broker a long-term lease. This has been used a couple of times from a library cleanup, believe it or not, where like the Friends of the Library had taken over a building and cleaned, you know, gotten the necessary state and public records, cleaned the building, and then the Friends of the Library operate the building, even though it's really the library for the town. We've done that in Burrwick, Maine. So there's just some creative examples out there that might apply. Just things to think about. Again, I'm not an expert in BRELLA, but that might be a consultation to have with the state to see what options are available to the city. Okay, it's next.
Go back.
I knew you weren't going to let me get away with that one.
So if the city by chance turned it over to a third party, it can never come back to the city. Is that, you want the bottom paragraph?
See that word there?
The environmental current policy.
It's a policy. So that's something you can have a conversation. I am not from Vermont D E C.
No, no, okay, that's, that caught my eye right there.
Yes.
Basically, giving up a piece of property in the middle of the city. I'm going to pick on NVDA for example. Suppose we did turn it over to Dave and NVDA.
Right.
But what's the guarantee in 40 years, 30 years, they don't go out of business? Then what would happen? That's the, that's a question probably for the experts, but that's in the back of my mind, you know, because it's something that you've got to think about long term. If we turn it over to any third party, what happens when they go away?
Well, you have 125-year lease, right? There's all kinds of, I'm not a lawyer.
No, I know you can have leases, but it's just, yeah.
Right, yeah, so I'm not a lawyer. I'm just saying, these are just things to think about, and I'm only throwing them out there because that's a pretty big lift for a town or a city to do, wanting to still get the playground, right? So just trying to throw some ideas out there. The next slide, and this slide was.
Excuse me.
Oh, sure, sure.
Are there any legislative proposals to change some of the criteria, such as allowing the city to be eligible to enroll in brownouts, or allow the city to receive?
Federal or state funding?
Yes.
Again, I work for the feds. I'm an engineer. I do the technical stuff. I do not believe so, but that is a conversation to have with Vermont D E C. And Linda Preventure, in the context of the corrective action plan. Yeah, but I, it's awesome.
I just have a question to, so I just, did I hear correctly that it's a competitive grant for the brownfields for the BRELLA program?
So federal grants are competitive.
Right.
ACCD grants are competitive. Dave, you might have a, we are in an unprecedented time of funding.
Yeah.
For brownfields grants right now, and they are still competitive as far as I know. Dave?
Yeah, there's a lot of money in brownfields right now, both through the agency partners and through the Department of Environmental Conservation, so probably more than we've ever seen.
Yeah, so it's a good time to have this problem, I guess, is what we're saying.
There's always a silver lining to something. So chances are good that we would get the money, because there seems to be money floating out there. If perchance the brownfields didn't come through, for some reason there were so many applicants that Newport didn't get it, we would just have to revisit this all again, right? Because then we wouldn't be able, we'd have to get, well, we couldn't get our property back because we turned it over.
Well, again, I'm not a lawyer.
So legal, yeah.
You know, it's all legal things, there's many machinations here.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, yes.
I'm projecting out to things that may not have ever happened.
Right, right, right. Okay, so yeah, so you have it to do, I think, is what I hear in here, that is, like I said, I'm just a federal cleanup, telling you, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not mean to Google you.
No, no, it's fine, that's why I'm here, and that's why I wanted to come in person, because it's so much easier to do this in person than to do it on the, and like I said, I really do want to support the folks who have been trying so hard to make this happen. So this was actually supplied to me by, oh, please forgive me, the chairman of the rec department.
Our rec director and me, the city of Newport provided that.
Yes.
That came from our rec department.
Yes, so this is from Laura. And it basically shows how committed the city is to fundraising for the park. They've already raised $484,000 for the park redevelopment, and this is the funding that started the whole conversation down here. Some state and federal grant funds, block grant funds, and I can't remember the other, LWCF?
Night and Water Conservation Fund through the National Park Service, it has to provide park conservation.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the funding right there, about $270,000, $80,000. Corporate sponsors, about $138,000. In-kind labor, Eats Electric, kudos to them, $10 grand. Fundraising for the community, about $30,000. A different, so fund me another $12,000 from the community, and then donor bricks, another $12,000. So they really have raised quite a bit. And I will tell you, as far as competitive grant scope for the feds, when we see this kind of dollars is why we want to get involved, right? It's why we put TBA funds on, it's why we supported an assessment of the property, because you really see the community wanting to make something happen. We care about leveraged funds. So if I put in $100,000 of assessment funds, this shows me that my $100,000 was worth it. Next slide. So this is next steps. This was just Laura and I kind of brainstorming on what you, what possibly, well, what has to be done by process. So like I said, the corrective action plan just came out a couple of weeks ago for playground redevelopment. EPA and NV Vermont D E C are reviewing it now. To be honest, Linda gives it the final approval, because that's the way the program works in the state. Different states have different ways of doing that. Once she gives it the review, they can go out for formal public notice. We notify the abutters of the property, and we held a 30-day public comment period. And like I said, we can do a much more in-depth public meeting if that is something the community desires. And then the big 64, more than $64,000 question, right? How to secure cleanup funds to implement the corrective action plan. So I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure working with the community, supporting you, and I hope that we can continue to make your playground a reality.
Questions? I want to thank you for coming, because I felt it was, I just, I know it's been delayed, and I was probably one of the more impatient people, most likely, because, because I just felt the public, we kept getting, some of us kept getting asked a lot of questions. You know, there's been a lot of questions.
Totally fair.
About, about why the delay in the splash pad, why the delay in the playground, what's happening with all the money that was raised, you know?
And we didn't know.
And we didn't have answers, and this has been very helpful, to be able to say, I could reference this, if someone asks me a question, I'll tell people, we have to go and look at the documents, and so I found this very helpful this evening, and I really appreciate you coming.
No, my pleasure. And like I said, we did have a lot of delays because of COVID, and then Josh on the phone has a very new and very early born daughter. So that was also one of our delays on our side, so that's also why Josh is not here. Congratulations, he's got a newborn at home. That came too new, too early. Unexpectedly. So anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, sure.
Chris go.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a printed copy of that packet, and then I'd like to have your card if you have one.
I do not have a card, which I realized was a mistake up here, but I can just write it down for you later.
You do, please.
Yeah, and yes, so my name is Chris Beeling. I work for the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. Everything I do is public information. I'd be happy to follow up with anybody. Email is always a little bit easier, but we can talk to you.
And Laura, can you, can you send that tonight? Because I have to go a lot of junk for Johnson Park at the moment, so I don't, I don't want to work on this tonight, can you do it?
Yeah, I'd be glad to send one to you, too.
Sure, it's on the website.
It will be within minutes, but I'll send it to both of you, so you don't have that covered.
Yes.
Jim, did you have something?
It was a pleasure.
Yeah, Chris, you said no digging on the other three sections. I mean, those are ball fields, they have to be maintained. They just can't let them grow over with grass. Somebody may want to put lights in there, they got to dig.
So I think if that is, comes up, you just have to, we have to, the city would have to work with the state. And basically, what I think will happen is there'll be some type of soil management plan, which is already proposed in the corrective action plan, that you would just have to follow for the other areas as well, you know?
Yeah, but the plan would be different for.
It might be.
Two, three, and four than it is for one.
Correct, but it would, it would, there will have to be some thought, I guess, before you do a, you know, and I'm not talking about.
Well, I'm just wondering if that's limitation, you can't go.
I was going to say, I don't think, I'm not talking about maintenance on the top or your, your groundskeeping. We're talking, you know, we did, the upper soil was zero to six was tested, and that came out clean.
That's, that's, there are 18 inches.
Thank you, yes.
Yes, so 18 years, ball fields are cleared for current use. You know, the soil, zero to 18 inches, came back clean. So in that, that's the interval that Vermont D E C considers surface soil in the state of Vermont. So each state that defines surface soil will include the benefit of Vermont, it's zero to 18 inches. That's what we sampled past, those, those D years that were presented. And for the ball fields, they all came back below any of the actual Vermont's total standards. So, you know, they're, as far as Vermont's concerned, clean.
Right, so any.
In that zero to 18-inch interval, that doesn't give a, we had on it, it shows that they're still below 18 inches. That's, that's where the soil editor comes into place. But if, if there's going to be any sort of work in that subsurface below 18 inches, that's something we're having to manage those soils.
So we're good to resurface a field if it has to be down to six inches or something? You don't need, have to jump through a hoop for that?
Exactly.
All right, that's what I'm getting at.
No.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was thinking more like trenching, piping, you know, or potentially if you do a, you know.
Sounds like jaw edging, we're down 18 inches.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Oh, I thought I, okay, I saw, I saw her, then, okay, go ahead.
If we were just talking about playground equipment, then that wouldn't be a problem.
So the issue is more because of the splash pad area?
It's the infrastructure below, yes. So it would be anything that went down, like so footings for playground equipment would also be probably impacted, any sonar tubes or any kind of footing sheet you had to put in. Any piping for the splash pad, yeah. So, yeah.
And maybe I also failed in the service operation at full...
Yeah.
But it's kind of stated that the parsonic leadership is very 18 inches. So that is another component, the issue with playground area specifically. And why the present alternative is that barrier and then adding clean soil on top, that gives you a contact barrier so that people are not coming in contact with that soil.
Yeah, that one playground area happened to be hotter than the others.
So is it okay for people to be on playground surface playing?
So we have talked about that with the state. It is not ideal, but I know the community has put in some additional bark mulch on any of the real dirt part. You don't really have to worry about grass, right? It's not so much the grass, it's the dirt. So the dirt part, I believe Tom has put additional bark... Oh, are you Tom?
Yes, Tom.
I've never met Tom in person.
Yeah, Tom Merton, our public works director.
So I will tell you, I only see Tom at this size when I see him. So I apologize, Tom, that I didn't put that together. So yes, why don't you talk about what we talked about with the additional bark mulch?
Yeah, we... Most of the stuff in the playground area had definitely located. So the area mostly where the kids were playing has a depth of mulch, or not mulch, but chips, wood chips.
Right.
Okay, great, thanks.
So that's an interim solution? I don't think the state will buy that. Again, I'm speaking secondhand.
They will buy it long-term.
Correct, yeah. And the grass areas are... Okay, thanks. Yes, thank you.
So do I understand correctly that if the city were able to raise, you know, the $300,000 or not quite, then we could retain ownership of the park and not have to...
Well, again, that's just an option, but that is another option, yes. If the city raised the funding, yes. So we're just throwing out some options, yeah. Just have... Yeah, the money just has to...
Any other questions?
I'm still not clear. Is it okay for children to play in the playground now? I mean, I don't even know. Did we remove the swings or something?
No, like I said, there is... The issue is contact, you know, normal contact or eating the soils. So the grass area is fine, and we did put additional... We recommended that the city put additional wood chips up there. I actually went there today, and there's quite a bit of wood chips on the dirt surfaces. So for that interim, till we kind of figure out where to go, that would be the best course of action.
So children can go and play and go on the swings and whatever's there?
These have been going there and playing for 100 years. Have a lot of problems. 100 years from now, who knows?
Anyway, thank you so much. It was really nice to meet you.
One quick question. I'm not sure if you can answer it. Does the whole park have to be transferred to another entity or just the playground area?
So that is another legal question I am not sure of. And there's also issues with the grant funding and who owns the parcels. So there's a lot of legal questions that you have to... And that's definitely one of them.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I think if that was considered, it'd be a revolution for the city. I don't think the board would ever vote for that, but...
Okay.
I think that often.
There's another option. There's options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, item number six, Purple Heart City signage. I had put out an email with pictures of potential signs to the council to consider since we are a... We're the first Purple Heart community in the state of Vermont. After the Purple Heart ceremony two Sundays ago, the commander of the VFW, Robert Burnier, approached me and said that he had actually ordered two signs, but he's not sure of the quality, so...
Well, here they are.
Oh.
So you recall it?
Oh, you have it? Oh, we did get it in time.
They're aluminum.
They're aluminum. They're roadworthy. So, oh, well, we actually have two signs, so that was my proposal. And so this is kind of a moot point now on the agenda, but he had...
Paul, I need two more.
You should order two more because the other entrances. So we would want to order two additional ones. But those are nice.
Paul and I had discussed that and wondered if we needed to have a purple background, but I think it shows up better on the green.
It does. We like the green. And so we'll want to order two more. I guess we could have him order it and reimburse... So we could... My thought was to put them up on the entrance from Coventry... Coventry Road, there's a welcome sign there, coming in on 105, and coming in by the ledgers. And then we thought Sius had them, those are the four main entrances to the city. So...
Mr. Mayor, do you know where he ordered the signs?
I do not.
Uh, Dr. Robert Burnier, Commander of the VFW, ordered them. He got them somewhere.
I'm just curious about standard size that they're putting up around the country or they just seem kind of small at 15, 35 miles an hour passing. Just a thought.
All I said here is arrowheadiowa.com, Major of the USA by veteran. I thought Robert could tell you where he got them.
Yeah. So we'll want to contact him to order two more. Those look like a standard, a standard size, like...
Well, I'll contact him. I've got him on email.
Okay, if you could contact him, that would be great.
Okay, I can do that.
Can I ask who was depicted on that sign?
George Washington.
Do you think that there could be the same sign put up, but maybe without his picture?
No, it is a requirement. That is the Purple Heart that was given out in 1700s originally, and now is given out in modern times. That is the actual Purple Heart that is given out. We cannot modify that at all.
Original design passed by Congress way back in the...
It may raise issues down the line.
It will not raise an issue.
That's the actual metal.
That's the actual metal. That men and women who die for that country, for our freedom, receive...
Yeah, I have no objection to the concept of the Purple Heart, the metal. It just may raise other issues one of these days.
It wouldn't come to us if it was coming from the federal level down.
Right. Okay, okay, moving on.
Moving on from here, so we don't need to order two more.
I don't think so. I mean, unless you wanted to, for knowledge sake, we took...
Yeah, let's just take a motion. That way we'll have it in the record.
So I'll move to purple, just two Purple Heart signs to put up in addition to the two that were brought by the VFW.
Motion made by Ms. Patterson. Is there a second? Okay, is that by Mr. Charbonneau? Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is a water meter status and authorization to apply for a USDA grant loan program. I had asked back in July for a status of how many meters had been installed, how many were left to install. And my thought process was, back when we voted to mandate water meters because of potential funding for the water tower, we never put an end date. It's an open-ended date. So in theory, you can't really... Yeah, you might have mandated water meters, but you don't have a date. So someone could say, oh, what's the end date? There isn't any, then don't come to my house. And so that is why, that is why I asked for an update. I guess I was a little surprised to see applying for a USDA grant, but if that is something that will help us implement it. Because I know you put a... You put, if they could potentially all be installed by 2025?
That would be best case scenario, and that's talking to Wayne Elliott and learning, I talked to the USDA as well about the process. So that's putting a whole bunch of process into place. You also have to go through procurement. And then once you have your procurement, it's really up to the grant criteria and the contractor. You know, because you would hire a third-party contractor to do the installations. So there are some unknowns. And I wasn't sure how to proceed or how to take that energy and it seemed like it was best to go for a grant and see what we might come up with, well, know more. And that way we can keep our finger on the pulse and keep moving this forward.
I just still think we need to put an end date, whether we apply for a grant or not, whether it's three years, like what you said with the USDA, or we do six years, you know, something. We have to put an end date because people... Actually, I was chatting downstairs with Stacy and Robin, who said they've had people say... They've asked them about, you know, meter whatever, and they said, oh, well, there's no end date, so we don't have to really worry about ever having one installed. And, you know, we really need to put some teeth into it, in my opinion. Just give a little incentive. Because I think, as Tom said at one meeting, you're kind of running out of people volunteering. Oh, yeah, right, and that's why I...
We don't have, you know, we have addresses of people, but we don't have phone numbers. So, you know, it's a process for us to go hang a flyer on the door and hope they call you. So unless we incentivize it or we force people to call us, it's going to get out. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the other thing to keep in mind, too, is, you know, the three main crew we had, the wastewater plant, were the ones putting them. They did a very good job the last few years. That's about beyond their normal routines of work, so it's still a lot to be...
Because right now, according to this, 826 need to be metered. And out of that 826, I'm assuming there's probably a few that can't be metered. Or that are... I know some... So that's where we're going to have to think about our rate structure, too, because there are some sections, I'm thinking along the lake where the pipes are above the ground, and only for summer people. Those places will never be able to be metered.
I was told by one of my neighbors, she called a long time ago to have gone and no longer showed up on Dutch Street.
Well, we'll take a look because our records are showing that we're right up to date, so I'm interested.
I'm just one part of what she told me.
Yeah.
Do you know how long it'll... Do you know how long it'll... Congress, three weeks? I mean, I don't know. I've been told electrified in motion.
The only reason I ask is to...
Tammy, what's your last name? I don't know.
Our wastewater plant, I'll bring her in, resign, and last, so any contacts that we had prior to that kind of gets...
It was David's house. Tammy Burton, now, okay?
Blanche, yeah.
What's that?
Tammy Blanche.
Okay.
I'll look it up. I'll look it up to me.
So that was the kind of like the theory behind what I was thinking, is we need... You need some teeth sometimes.
I think that's very good thinking, but if it's okay, let me do a little more research on this and find out what the grant requires. Because we're going to have to get it to our engineer as well. And, you know, I think we can come back with something that's in alignment with what the funding source will allow.
Well, if the city is mandated, then they're going to have to do it. Before that, we ran it off.
It's just a, it's a very big undertaking, that's all. Mr. Mayor, I have another question.
One second.
Okay.
When do you think you can come back to the council?
I can get an appointment with the USD grant. I can ask her for an appointment, and I can try to come back at our next meeting because that's three weeks away. It's going to... And I'll keep you posted, so we can target that.
Okay, because I'd like to have it resolved by probably October, if we could have a date. I really think we need to put an end date.
So we... I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So we actually have two different issues here. We have, we now know that there's grant money available, what we didn't know in the past. Well, the grant money, the second page of this, this is the... This is from the presentation that Wayne Elliott gave us when we were going for the water tower. So the grant money, this was incorporated into the total package of the water towers. USDA is interested in learning more about this for possible funding up from meters, just the meter portion. So recall when we had started with the original free water meter program, and then when the council mandated meters, it was our hope that if we could install as many as possible on our done, it would make the total price lower. So that's been our emphasis. But I wanted to remind folks that back then, of course, it was 200 meters more back then, was $1,034,000. And this does consider that there'll be a certain percentage of complex ones, as you mentioned, but it also considers that it would be a third-party contractor that would be doing the work. So again, I see it as two different issues. I see it as proceeding, trying to get a grant to do it as issue number one, or, you know, action item one first. And then also, the second, the second item, which is separate from the grant, asking for the grant, is to put an end date on meters. So if we said, so if this is, you know, if 2025 is in here with a grant and somebody, a third-party, doing it, you know, that seems reasonable. It doesn't, 2025 doesn't appear to be workable if we have to do it with our staff. So if we put an end date that was further out, we could get the grant, we get it done earlier, before our end date, but we have an end date in place in case we have to do it ourselves. So I see it as two different things. It could be. I just want to ask, once you have your end date, what does that mean? Does that mean that you adjust the rates differently or how does it... What's the next step after an end date? Well, an end date is so that, as has been said numerous times, an end date is to give you incentive and a reason to get yourself metered. Because right now, there's no end date, so you just say, I'll do it next year, I'll do it this year, I'll do it next year. So that, I think we've talked about that here several times, that that's the reason to put an end date. Does that mean that, just one more question, so does that mean a change in the rates and fees so that those who are not metered by the end date have a different incentive through the rates and fees? So now you're talking rates and fees and restructuring, because we were talking about restructuring at one point, and we had the big push at the beginning of this year to put in a new rate structure. But this memo says that we need to look at it forward after we've had that for two or five years. Well, I'm talking about incentivizing. So, no, it's an open-ended question. So does, once you have an end date, is the incentive that your users can expect that if they don't have their meter installed by then, that they're going to have a different rate than those who are not metered? Yeah, I would think. I mean, I can't make that decision myself.
No, all right.
It's a council decision.
That would be a direction to go.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I can't make that decision.
Two different rates now, a meter rate and a...
No meter rate, right, that's no different.
Operating on two rates now.
So the unmetered rate...
I don't see a problem.
Is there a third party in mind if we're going that route?
That would be a, that would be a procurement process that USDA would require. We'd have to get three bids. And I know one of our neighboring municipalities used one pre-COVID they were very happy with, but we'd have to put out a poll for procurement. And just one other thing, about there are a few contractors that have installation resources. What does that mean exactly? Does that mean they don't have the knowledge to do it? They don't have the equipment or they don't have the personnel? I think it's a very specialized thing. So when we put out a procurement, it will be throughout management. So if we do them ourselves, it's not specialized, but it's specialized if a licensed plumber does it? Essentially, yes. Okay, yes.
So, so any local licensed plumber is not disqualified?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. I just didn't quite get the specialized for one, but not the other, I'm sorry.
I guess we haven't, have a more information for the next meeting.
I hope you do that.
You know, we can put off the vote, but at the next meeting, I want to have a vote on an end date. I really feel strongly that we need to have it.
And again, I mean, we talked about it the next meeting, but I don't have a problem with extending the time, you know, beyond 2025. I don't have an issue making it longer.
Okay.
If we get a grant, we get it done sooner, that's great, but we need to allow the flexibility for people who have to do it ourselves, the time to do it.
But we need to allow the flexibility for, we have to do it ourselves, the time to do it.
Because I, I had thought of an end date out beyond what the city manager had put here, based on some preliminary rough math idea I had. I think my end date was out to, let's see, that's 2025, that was three years. I think I went out actually another three years, is what I had done. I had put an end date of 2028, is what I had thought in my mind, based upon an average of doing so many amount of times, twelve months, and then figuring, you know, it was just some rough math based upon looking at what's been installed and figuring what could be installed. So, you have a question?
I just want to make sure I fully understand. So right now, there are employees installing meters, and that's costing just their hours. But then, there's funding available from USDA that would pay somebody else, and that's in the million-dollar ring, that would pay for the installation. So that, is there an issue with the city? Do the employees not, you know, do they not want to continue? Or is it, it's above the minimum?
Time on staffing.
Time on staffing.
Because they, you know, they do them as they can, and they're doing the job. I've had the problem with my meter, so they do a good job. So it's staffing in time.
When Tammy called, she says, "My neighbor wants his done," which is my Poojor.
Well, he needs to call Mr. Burnier.
Well, they did, Tammy did.
Well, but she can't say for the neighbor. He needs to call directly. Anybody who wants a meter needs to call directly. They can't tell the other neighbor to call on their behalf.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's okay. That's good, okay, thanks.
I mean, we could have a vote on a date if we wanted to tonight. There's nothing that says we, you know.
I think it would have to be longer than the three years, because we don't know if we're going to get the, the grant is probably competitive, right? Yeah, so you're not guaranteed of getting it. So you don't, you don't want to box in the public works department, saying you're going to have a done for years, because we know that's not realistic. Right?
Well, we'll plan on next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Yeah, that's fine.
We'll plan on next meeting.
Do we need to vote to have it, to have it received?
We could vote.
I'm going to do it.
She can just proceed. We could just, I mean, we could vote to table that until the next meeting.
We probably should say so.
Yes. But Representative Page, have a...
I'm just curious, that million-dollar grant, is the city eligible to take that money and install those water meters themselves?
No.
You have to, you have to give it to an outside...
You have to give it somebody's license, right?
Yeah, that's the license we need to do it. You give it to a third-party, they make arrangements to contact the people, they make the appointment. They do...
They do the project.
They do the entire project. Would be, that's the way to go.
Yeah. Okay, so let's have a motion to table item seven.
So I will move to table item seven, the authorization to apply for USDA grant loan program to the next scheduled council meeting.
Motion you made, is there a second?
Oh, so I can...
Second by Mr. Pedersen, second by Mr. Wilson, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Item number eight, we're moving on to new business, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I've got a itinerant vendor application here. A young lady, she's a college student, wants to go around and sell children's educational books for seven days.
Like go around door-to-door, or?
Yeah. They're going to carry the books. College student, somewhere over there.
Is that, do we, I'm not, I guess I'm not really sure. I always think a vendor license is like having a booth set someplace. Because I don't think we can authorize somebody to go knocking on doors. I don't need of it, I don't need...
I mean, we had, you take a food salesman, it's weird.
Okay. I guess that was just a word of my tongue.
You're not setting them, but pressing them.
But did they have, did they get a vendor's license to do that? Encyclopedia, no, it's not Encyclopedia, guys did?
Well, they must have, all my time, but they... These things have been around for a while, a long time.
Forever, okay. The full of questioning.
So we need a motion?
I don't think you're going to be in any danger. I think we don't, I got eighteen...
We need a...
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Vaschau makes the motion to approve the vendor's permit, is there a second? Second by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Any other new business, Mr. Mayor?
Do we have the contact for this person so we can know something else?
Yeah.
That's a good idea, to let people know that you're selling...
Okay. Thank you, I'll grab it for you.
You'll have to, because...
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Somebody will call this...
No, Mr. Wilson, they're not selling that, you door-to-door yet.
I just have a question. Have you sent the kind of screen to every Mary Kay, Amway, Avon, or anybody else that's out selling stuff?
Avon and Mary Kay do it anyway.
They've been door-to-door for years.
Well, I know, but you're all of a sudden, you're sure of permits, you're right. If you're setting kind of a president, they're a day old, and you have to have permits to do it.
Well, they probably should have. Probably did.
This one applied for a permit, we're approving the permit. Because technically, if we don't approve it, then, you know, he brought it to us to approve, and if we don't approve it, technically, she's not allowed to go door-to-door.
This is a transient merchant and itinerant vendor permit. That's exactly what you...
My question would be, as a recipient, would a person, does a person have to pay at that moment? Do you get your book at that moment? Is she carrying the books with her? Or do you have to give over credit card information, check information? What, I mean, what exchange is required at the door when you encounter this person? And what are we setting ourselves up for? It's, I guess, my main question.
I'm an authorized vendor.
All right, I'm an authorized city vendor. I have the city's permission to come and knock on your door. I just raised that as someone who doesn't want people coming to my door.
Well, to me, it's like the full rush man. You don't want to see them run when they knock on the door.
I like the go-gettness, I'm just not sure that's the process, but...
Because I, again, I don't know if I'm sure about that. People knocking on my door to sell me wheezes and Gorgoska cookies and...
I get, yeah, I get knocked on door for Gorgoska cookies, I get Christmas wreaths.
I think you're setting a scary person.
I don't think they are jumping. People that go in doors and sell their stuff for years and you're still doing it.
They have, they do, but now you're city-authorized.
That's why you have the permanent process. That's why these people decide it.
I look at it, the person at least filled out a permit application instead of just starting to knock on doors. At least we have something. Now the chief can tell, put out something that you might haven't done.
That's what the guy said up there.
You know.
We raised the question, you make the decisions.
Yeah, I say the shit, I don't care, but I'm not going to be buying any kids' books. My kids are all grown up now, so I don't need that.
But I guess my question pointed to, is that information on the application, like the process at the door, it would be good to know whether, not just knocking on the door and selling, but what is the format there? Because I think we just...
For that, on this car, it's the same format for any vendor in the city as it is for... The same thing for all.
But it's, if I could make one more comment. A vendor, a vendor on Main Street is different than a vendor on my own property. And so that's the only thing. A vendor on, in public space is different than a vendor saying, "I'm city-authorized, coming on my property to sell me something." That's where I see the distinction. It's an unauthorized, unwarranted person.
Maybe I'll call the post office and tell them, "Don't celebrate your bill with somebody else on the watch out there." But the benefit is that the contact information will be with the police. So if there are any questions or problems, the chief will have the contact information and accompany that. I mean, you can always make a contingent of whatever Travis finds out. I'm just presenting, you guys decide what you want or not.
But this is his application.
That's up to the, the calendar. Renegade line.
Yes, right.
Well, you can't do that.
I don't know. Southwestern Advantage Sales Representative. I don't know. Going to this, an A-plus rating of the better business, or a current, but anybody can put that on.
What are you going to do?
We had a motion, we had a second.
I just like the difference is, like John said, Gorgoska, people come to my house all the time. They're not telling me where they're from or whatever. There's the Gorgoska cookies, you need the body of cookies, you don't. I don't ask them where they live or how they do cookies. My girls live at home, and I don't think they have any information from my girls from me. We just, we just had a point off. I think if anybody asks me where I live, I'm sure you do that. But we did.
We don't want them to ask where they live on that one. They're going to drop the point and look.
Okay, well, we had a motion and a second.
Yeah, none of you decides, okay with me, I'm just bringing the vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't know what I'm going to do in this position, I'm so sorry. Say aye.
All ayes.
Sorry for the ayes.
Hit masses. I don't have anything, anything other than you, no? Mr. Charbonneau, new business?
Uh, yeah. White City Sound Water Park, that was excellent this year. It was fantastic. Kudos to Andrea and Neil, organizing it. It drew a lot of people, a lot of boulders. And it was, thank God, the weather was warm.
Yeah, there were six weeks of nice weather.
And it was, it was excellent.
Yep. No new business? I guess mine would be new, old business. I'm glad the recreation director's here. I, is the calendar for the city, when you reserve things, working all right? Because I was informed that we lost a couple softball tournaments because the field appeared to be booked.
It was booked, and it was never, they never canceled the reservation. So we did have a reservation that came in. And all that, I'm not saying it freaked out me, it was on the calendar.
Do we...
But they never canceled. It was, it was a June tournament. Yeah, so the system's there.
Okay, but is there a way we can follow up?
I did.
Before, like, the event, just to confirm again? Because, you know, I'm getting at, is I hate us potentially losing softball tournaments, because it's a, it brings a lot of money in for the businesses, you know, in town. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't lose tournaments because the calendar, you know, being booked, or, I mean, it's not really booked.
Absolutely, I really agree with you. And I did, I mean, I had no historical knowledge of that tournament, so I didn't know. And I did follow up with the group that was going to book that weekend to see if we could get them. So I've already reached out to them to talk to them next week.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I had someone stop me and fill me in about it. And we were concerned also that we would potentially lose future tournaments. And we know what, how it helps all the local businesses. I guess that's all I have on new business, new business?
No, no business.
Okay.
Anything new?
I just want to let folks know about the Barbecue with the Badge. That's this week.
Yeah.
The eighteenth, if you don't know.
Yeah, so Thursday, the eighteenth, Garden Park, we're doing the same thing we did last year, just like community outreach, hot box hamburgers. Helicopter's supposed to be coming, we're going to be doing canine demos again. We'll have a special team of equipment there from state police, border patrol, customs, sheriffs, and us. So just kind of bring your family down and hang out and check things out. It's not crazy, we're open for seven.
It's been officially...
What?
It's officially called.
Barbecue with the Badge.
Barbecue Badge with the...
No, Barbecue with the Badge.
Barbecue Badge.
Barbecue with the Badge.
It's on our Facebook page, I've shared it on there, it's on the marquee, so...
Who lives in that?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Old business?
No.
Mr. Charbonneau?
Mr. Wilson? Yeah, I brought mine up, and old, it could have been either. Have we started moving forward on the reservoir and liner and cover? We voted on...
That's in Lynn's, our engineer's hands.
Okay.
So he's got the yes vote, and we probably won't hear anything for a little while. But yes, it essentially means.
Okay, we're gone for a minute.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
I don't have any old business.
Go, thank you.
I just want to let folks know, on the public hearings for the municipal plan, I have announced dates that have since changed. So I want to just bring folks up to date that the planning commission meets tomorrow night. They're expected to vote on moving the plan over to the city council. And you have the draft in front of you. At that point, that starts the clock ticking. The public notice will go into the paper the seventeenth. So I'm expecting the first, the first city council public hearing to be September nineteenth, and the second public hearing, which would be the final one, October seventeenth.
And so there's no confusion, it will be at 6:30?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Any other old business?
No, thank you.
Okay, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, September twelfth, 6:30 PM, here in the council room.
Thank you.
And we need a motion to adjourn at 8:06.